Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. What we have for consideration tonight is a proposed text amendment to Article 7, Division 7.4, 74.50, public hearing scheduling and notice in Section 7470, public hearing procedures to clarify the public comment is not taken for administrative appeals to the Planning Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes, Mr. Merchant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. What we have for consideration tonight is a proposed text amendment to Article 7, and what this would do is that it would affect public hearings for two very specific occurrences. One would be an appeal to the Planning Commission, and one would be appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Both the Planning Commission and the ZBOA, or Zoning Board of Appeals, they occasionally hear appeals from any aggrieved party affected by a decision made by staff. And basically, the Planning Commission hears appeals to things that are related to subdivision and land development, and the Zoning Board of Appeals hears appeals to a zoning decision. And when either of these bodies hear appeals, they follow what is known as a quasi-judicial process. So you're basically hearing evidence and then making a determination based on that evidence. And our code specifically addresses this by saying that the evidence that needs to be considered by the Planning Commission in making the decision has to be those that staff used in making its decision. So, you know, and I think this is all fresh in your mind, you know, last month, the appeal for the Pine Island golf courses, you were looking specifically at exhibits that were either the plans that were reviewed or the correspondence that occurred during that process. And where there is some confusion is that in the Community Development Code, when we speak about the process of public hearing, and even when an appeal occurs, it's still a public hearing, the public hearing section talks about receiving public comment. And from discussion with the county attorneys and looking at the way this has historically been done, that public comment is not received for these appeals because that's introducing new evidence that was not considered by staff when they made the decision. And it is the opinion of staff and also the county attorneys that introducing public comment when an appeal is being heard could introduce or sway a decision of the Planning Commission that could open it up to being further appealed, you know, once the decision is made. Because, you know, the person who is filing the appeal would be saying, well, you're basing your decision on new evidence that was brought forward at that meeting and not what staff used when it made the decision. So the revised, or the proposed amendments we're bringing forward are to clarify this. So it's still a public hearing, the public is in attendance, but for these appeals, you know, you're not hearing public comment.
Okay. Questions?
Rob, is there a way that there could be an opportunity for the public to have comment if the chair said, this is a slightly different, you know, venue? So what I'm hearing you saying, and I understand it, is that if there's this quasi-judicial format, it's like everything is in a box, like everything that we have decided, that staff has decided, our interactions are kind of in a box, and we're in the appeal process, and you can't kind of go out of that box. And justification for not having the opportunity for public comment is that it would raise issues that are not addressed in the box. I guess I, and I think many of my colleagues here, really care about the public comment piece. Is there any other way to have public comment be accepted? I mean, I know it's hard. It would affect us, correct? I mean, if somebody's standing up there, it would probably affect our decision-making, right? But is there any other venue? Is there something, is there another hearing that's possible? Are there, could people do it electronically? What I'm trying to say is, I really want to preserve in any way that I feel it's important to have that public comment on the record, although I understand what the judicial part means, that we have to describe what's in the box.
I mean, I'll make a comparison. You know, when the staff review team, when we review projects, we are weighing solely on what the code says about the development. So, you know, the number of parking spaces, the setback, all of that is based on numbers that are in the code. The public is welcome, you know, we, if a public wants to attend a meeting of the staff review team, they can, but their comments are not going to have any difference about whether a development meets a setback or not. And, you know, so I, as, you know, the planning director, I believe that I don't want to invite public comment when that public comment is really not supposed to, you know, influence a decision of a body. I mean, it's, it's sort of like, you know, public is welcome to attend, but it's wasting that effort on something that is not supposed to be considered by the Planning Commission. You know, so, I mean, in the case of, like, when staff is reviewing a development, the idea is that when the zoning and subdivision regulations were approved, that went through a public process. Now we're simply using those tools to, you know, review a development. And I think this is similar in that, that you're, you're looking at very specific issues related to, you know.
So I don't want to, you know, put the notion on Ed or on County Council and Vice Chair McAllen, but I think both Ed and Vice Chairman McAllen use tremendous discretion. McAllen's slightly different, but it was County Council, but Ed, you know, allowed people to speak, members of the public, during the appeal process. So I'm just nervous if we make, I understand that there's been, for nine months, you guys have been trying to clarify a lot and tighten up the CDC, I get that, but I would like to see some element of discretion left to the chair of this body. So I wonder what you think about that.
Well, I mean, this does not affect a rezoning, it doesn't affect text amendment in the code, comprehensive plan, every other action the Planning Commission takes. And I, you know, since I've been here, I've seen maybe three or four appeals. So we do this maybe once every two or three years.
Yeah. But I mean, Ed did, I mean, didn't you?
For clarification, Ed.
Yeah, just to clarify, yeah, there's clarification. There were no public comments during the administrative appeal last month. We did not have that.
But Mr. Trofiano spoke.
No, that was during the rezone. That wasn't an appeal. But that was not an administrative appeal.
But when he spoke, he was representing the applicant.
Yes, correct.
The appellant, because he was the appellant.
We do, since it is quasi-judicial, we do have the authority to call witnesses or subpoena for witnesses according to the rules of procedure. We've never had an opportunity or thought of doing that. I think this is very narrowly defined as applicable to administrative appeals involving the staff's decision process, being fair or unfair to the applicant. And so the evidence of that is in the documentation between the two, and is submitted by both parties. And there is no other one involved in that unless we feel that there's a tangential witness that we feel needs to be subpoenaed to testify to one side or the other of the issue.
So the two lawyers for the, you know, the county lawyer and the developer's lawyer both spoke.
That's correct.
Representing who they needed to represent.
Yeah, they were representing the applicant and the county. And in our case, our attorney was representing us.
Sure. The second part, Rob, that I simply don't understand is that if we vote on this tonight, does it automatically apply to the ZBOA? I didn't realize that we had kind of authority over how their judicial processes move forward.
Yeah, I mean, actually, the Planning Commission, you're making recommendations about laws, and the same laws that govern the ZBOA, I mean, are in the Community Development Code. So, you know, you can.
Have we heard from them? Do we have a comment from them about this change?
I mean, they see appeals a lot more often, and they're, they do not solicit public comment. I think that the reason this came up is that there was a question by the attorney because our ordinance was vague on the subject.
Yes.
But it's a general understanding, you know, that, I would say, it's like a courtroom. You know, if somebody is in a trial, they don't want necessarily people from the audience giving their opinion on, you know, that, I think that's probably the best analogy. So, yeah, I mean, this would affect the ZBOA as well, but I've seen several appeals in this time by the ZBOA, and they do not solicit public comment.
So the chair of the ZBOA is like Chairman Pathus, they're kind of the judge in this situation?
Yes.
And what we're hearing here, what our responsibility is, is to make a recommendation that ultimately gets approved or not.
That goes to County Council.
By County Council.
That's what I read.
Yeah, through the Land News Committee to County Council, and I believe through your readings as well, and a public hearing.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? If not, can I have a mo, can I have a motion? Don't be bashful. Go ahead, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend that the proposed text amendment to Article 7, Division 7.4, Section 7.450 be approved, a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, I have a recommendation, or a motion for approval, recommendation for approval, and a second. Are there any other comments?
A second.
Yes.
We also want to include 7.4.70.
Just to connect with that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you admitted one of the, okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, if not, may I have a vote for recommendation for approval of the text amendment? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, opposed? One opposed. Okay, it passes as a recommendation, go forward. Thank you. All right. Zoning and map amendment, rezoning request for 71.54 acres located at 1691 Okati Highway from T2 Rural to T4 Neighborhood Center, T4 NC and T3 Neighborhood DN3 using a Village Place type overlay. Article 3, Division 4, Section 80, Article 7, Division 3, Section 50. It's a lot of divisions.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay, well, I'd like to just provide an overview of the comprehensive plan and the tool that is being proposed by the applicant today, the Village Place type, just to provide some context, and then what I, then I would like Mark to talk about the specifics of what is being proposed. The Planning Commission, I think you're used to hearing.
I have a recommendation, or a motion for approval, recommendation for approval, and a second. Are there any other comments?
A second.
Yes.
We also want to include 7.4.70.
Just to connect with that. Yes.
Yeah, I think you admitted one of the, okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay. If not, may I have a vote for recommendation for approval of the text amendment? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Opposed? One opposed. Okay. It passes as a recommendation. Go forward. Thank you. All right. Who's in that hand? Zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 71.54 acres located at 1691 Okati Highway from T2 Rural to T4 Neighborhood Center, T4 NC, and T3 Neighborhood DN3 using a village place type overlay. Article 3, Division 4, Section 80, Article 7, Division 3, Section 50. It's a lot of divisions.
Yeah.
Okay. We're ready to go.
Okay. Well, I'd like to just provide an overview of the comprehensive plan and the tool that is being proposed by the applicant today, the village place type, just to provide some context. And then, what I, then I would like Mark to talk about the specifics of what is being proposed. The Planning Commission, I think you're used to hearing zoning map amendments, you know, where the question is whether or not to zone a property, you know, from T2 Rural to C5, regional center mixed use. And the, you know, and the question is brought to the Planning Commission, you look at a number of factors, the comprehensive plan, the availability of infrastructure, all of that, and render a decision. And really, the decision is typically yes or no, recommending to council to make the amendment to the map or recommend denial. The tool being proposed today is, I would say, a little more like the classic plan unit development. This is a tool that the comprehensive plan identifies as a way to guide future rezonings. And the comprehensive plan is very prescriptive about where these are located. And what this allows, so in the comprehensive plan, we have a, I don't know if you could zoom out a little bit. This is the 170 corridor. That's good. Or a little, there, that's perfect. This is the 170 corridor, basically from McGarvey's Corner, the intersection 278, 170 at the bottom, going north toward Old Field. And what the comprehensive plan recommends on that corridor, rather than to have continuous sprawl on the county's side, to where there is development, that that development be more concentrated and coordinated, be more walkable. And in between areas of those would be areas that are rural or preserved. Right now, on the 170 corridor, we already have a pattern of development. If you go from McGarvey's Corner and go north, there's a little bit of commercial with Okati Center, and then you have land that's under conservation easement, you know, Beryl Landing and, I think that's the Palmer property. Then you have River Bend. Then you have some more land that's under conservation easement. And then you have what originally was three plan unit developments that were approved back in 2007, 2008, which has turned into, or Mail and Bluff, and River Oaks, and Okati Elementary. And then you have some additional preserved land, and you have Old Field. And so the idea is to continue that pattern of development, but the, you have on the map these circles that kind of indicate where, where there is going to be future growth, where those areas should be. And what the plan recommends is that where you have these nodes of growth, that rather than simply a straightforward rezoning, it would be a place type overlay. And what that is, is that it allows, in our code, in the Community Development Code, there's a section that talks about, okay, well, there are different types of places. There's village, there's hamlets, and there's rural crossroads. The idea is closer to municipality or development, you're going to have a larger scale community, village type. As you go into, get into the rural areas, then that's where you would have hamlets or rural crossroads. Still, small walkable nodes, but much smaller in scale. So the ordinance kind of has, prescribes the character of what these areas would look like, the types of districts. But it also requires that the applicant not only show how the areas can be rezoned, but show how the roads will be laid out, where the open space is going to be, you know, where the center of the community is going to be. All of these things are required to be provided by the developer. And so what you have is a tool that, I would say that the advantages of this tool is that the type of development that would occur is much more prescribed. I know oftentimes, when we're looking at a rezoning and somebody's saying, "Okay, I'm going to rezone my property to C4 neighbor, or Community Center," really, the only assurance we have is anything that's permitted in that district. You know, it's very hard, somebody, the developer may have a vision for that property, but that vision is not locked in other than what the zoning allows. The advantage of this method, the place type overlay, is it, not only does it prescribe what the zoning districts are, but what the community is going to look like. And it also gives the Planning Commission more ability to negotiate, you know, over the site plan that's being proposed. So there are a lot of advantages to this approach. And so I guess I wanted to just start by introducing this concept. This is something that the ordinance always anticipated, that as Beaufort County grows, we would like to see it grow in this fashion rather than just simply sprawling out. But also, the, you know, that this is a tool that is recommended in the comprehensive plan as well, you know, for, for growth on this corridor. In addition, one of the things that I think that is unique to this rezoning, and certainly a direction that we would like to go, staff, and see more of, is much more coordination on making sure that the rezoning is coupled with commitments to infrastructure and improvements in the area. On 170, and in this area in particular, there are a lot of concerns about traffic, about circulation at Okati Elementary. And so our engineering department has been working very closely with what are the future needs, both onsite and offsite in this area, to begin to correct some of these issues and allow, you know, if this area is to grow, to do it in a way that, you know, addresses these issues rather than simply compounds them and then puts it on the county to, you know, fund at a future date. So all of these things, we're hoping to see accomplished through this development. And I think as, as Mark Davis goes through these specifics, you know, there might be a few more questions still hanging out there, whether it's accomplishing. And so he'll, we'll kind of go over that, and then kind of what direction we would like to see this go if this does move forward, so.
Should we address questions of a general nature to you, Rob?
Yes, yeah.
Does anybody have a, just a general question that Rob just described to us?
I've got one, Chairman. I've just got a couple, because as I was looking at this and looking at these different types, you've got, you know, the rural type, the hamlet type, and the village type, and then there's, there's acreages in there that's involved, and then there's obviously percentages that are involved as well, as far as what can be put in that area. You know, rural is eight to 80 acres, hamlet, 80 to 160, village, 110 to 500. This is 71 and a half acres. I'm not, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to how that overlay is considered, that village type overlay with the restrictions that would be in that when it's, it's designated, I guess, for a larger area than the 71 and a half acres.
Yeah. What we looked at is looking at the existing development and joining this, the elementary school, River Oaks, and Mail and Bluff is, you know, it, so this isn't the entire village, this is a component of that. So that, that's the interpretation, staff, that we took.
Okay.
As a general question, if we were to recommend approval of this change in zoning, does that zoning and this, the TPO remain in perpetuity? Is it, would that property have flipped, or went to a different buyer?
Yes, it goes with the land. So it's similar to a rezoning or a plan unit development. Whatever components were, you know, approved as part of this go with the property.
So there's no condition under which a, this could, they could void a TPO and do something else?
It would have to be done through the same process that created it.
But they would, they would be stopped from doing anything else until it was again reviewed by, and approved by county council.
The Planning Commission, the county council.
But it would remain the same zoning at that point?
Well, unless they recommend a change of it. It doesn't, it doesn't go away with, with a conveyance of property. It goes with the land.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have a question, Rob?
Rob, under H. Staff recommendation, staff is working internally to determine whether a development agreement would be an appropriate tool to implement onsite and offsite improvements related to the proposal. I seriously, and I voiced this before, I feel like the more that the staff is asked to develop, to have a development agreement, the less the public is allowed to comment. I mean, it really falls on you or the county administrator, this has come up a bunch before. So could you explain that further? The kinds of things that staff is working internally to determine whether a development agreement would be an appropriate tool? Could you tell me a little more about that?
Yeah. And I think Mark will probably cover those as well. But I mean, I think a classic example, you know, some of the questions might be, if as part of this development, you wanted there to be commercial square footage, you know, and not all residential in the front. That's something that a development agreement could require, but it could also say, if 50,000 square feet of commercial is being proposed, it's not going to be at the tail end of the project, it might be timed with rooftops and with improvements. The timing of offsite improvements, the timing of onsite improvements, those are things that a development agreement is meant to regulate. The advantage to the developer is that it locks in the zoning that's approved at the time. You know, so, and that process is public. You know, it occurs, you know, at the council, you know, it, the Planning Commission doesn't get involved in a development agreement because it's an agreement between Beaufort County and the developer. But what we would be looking at is being a mechanism to assure some of the things that we want to see out of this development.
Have we not seen this before on Mail and Bluff, for example? You know, about the commercial being on 170 and the traffic impact, and we've had this discussion before. Am I wrong?
We've had discussion about, I mean, specifically about development agreements, or about...
No, about, yes, I mean, in the context of development agreements, but whether or not, for example, how much residential would be on, I believe, this parcel, I could be wrong, or access to Okati Elementary, and whether or not
Yes.
Commercial should be
Districts.
You know, on 170, or whether it should be, and there were residents who said, "No, like, bring it back," or "Don't bring it back into adjacent areas in the development." I mean, am I wrong? I think there's a lot of unknowns here.
One issue that, that came before the Planning Commission about a year and a half ago had to do with the front portion of Mail and Bluff, where the developer was asking, they were asking to change 200 square, 200,000 square feet
Thousand square feet.
Commercial to a certain number of multifamily.
Yep.
That, in and itself, had to occur through a legislative process. So that stalled at council, so nothing ever continued with that.
Correct. I mean, I remember that, yep.
But I think if anything, that speaks to, that decision was not made lightly. It had to happen in a public forum, and a lot of residents were concerned, and it stalled, you know, that, so they have not come forward since that time. So I think that is a similar kind of thing where I would say that if somebody's going to amend this plan, it would be the same type of thing. It has to come back through the Planning Commission and council.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You all right, Mark? So we just kind of build off of Rob. Do we want to just kind of jump into the plans, or do we want to talk a little bit more about some of the higher level stuff?
I'm all right with going into the plans.
All right. Pull up the regulating. All right. So I think what I just want to do is, I know this could be new to a lot of you, so I just want to kind of talk about the regulating plan and the PTO as a tool. And I think some of the concerns that were expressed regarding a development agreement are fair. I think to build off of that, it is a tool that's used, that people request, but at any point in time, people can request changes to zonings and maps. We just have to process them, they go through a process, they get an opportunity through their bodies. That occurs with everything. So that can occur here, that's why we're here, and it could occur in the future. But the regulating plan, well, that's the, go, I want the, we have the regulating. Perfect. So what we have here is to help maybe kind of build off of that and to kind of talk about some of the concerns about this tool as well as a development agreement, if that is county council's wishes, is the plan that you see here and the sheets that we will be talking about, regulating being the key word, is instead of just seeing zoning and then seeing just a blank color, you all have an opportunity, if you all kind of were involved, remember maybe some plan developments, a master plan was created as a part of that rezoning. And that's what you get here tonight. That's a part of this particular rezoning. You get to be a part of the actual land use plan. You're not just approving a blanket or considering or discussing a blanket rezoning. So I just want to make that very clear in this particular process and what we have in front of us tonight. So as you can see in this regulating plan, it is a regulating plan. It would run with the land. It requires it to be built that way. And if you have any questions for the applicant and their understanding of that, and they are here tonight, I would encourage you to ask them that. And so you can hear it from them. In addition to that, all of the metrics you see, the roads, the block sizes, the PTO in the Community Development Code, it prescribes these requirements. So the plans themselves have been designed. So I'm just using, let's just say it was regularly zoned, and they had that zoning. You all would never see it, they would submit straight to staff at our development review, and we would require them to build this way. But going through this process, you as the Planning Commission get an opportunity to be involved in that process as well. And we, as staff, think that's a very beneficial tool, and we hope you all do as well. So in, in these things, you're going to see three main plans. I'll just run through them real quick. So that's the regulating plan, kind of describes the percentages that you refer to, the different zoning and the percentages. Go to the, the next plan is a civic buffer and open space plan. That kind of shows you the metrics of where your open spaces are, civic space, a lot of those are prescribed by the Community Development Code, not really if they're up there. And then this prescribes the actual road treatments, the type of road, the right-of-way widths, how those roads are improved, if they have on-street parking, or if they don't have on-street parking. So when you add all those layers together, you've created a land plan that then creates an opportunity for certain building types to occur. So you've got your zoning, you've got your road networks, you've got your block sizes, and you have your open space spread throughout. So it is a, a very upfront, very prescribed plan that whoever is to develop this property has to develop it with this plan. And if they want to not do this plan, they have to come back and go through this whole process all over again. So I want the, I just want to kind of speak to the assurances of this process and kind of put those to the side, and maybe take any questions in regard to the process and what the PTO and what these regulating plans can achieve. So I'll, real quick, just want to jump into that before I move on, if there are any in that.
Have there been other situations like this in your experience?
This is your first. I think this is one of your first. So I know Rob mentioned that, I mean, that you all attempted one, it didn't work. So this is why we want to, you know, answer any questions, we know it's new. I've worked on these to great detail in other jurisdictions, but I believe this would be your all's first approach or process of these types of plans that allow you all to see these as a part of the rezoning at a Planning Commission level. So I believe this would be the county's first PTO. And going back to the comprehensive plan, as you all know, is a tool and a document that we use and that you all use, is that comprehensive plan is very clear, not only in its, where it shows we do these things, but I'll let you all take a look at our action plan, if you all are familiar with that. It clearly says that we as staff, or we as a county, are supposed to implement these and use this as a tool, where to find in our comprehensive plan. And then in addition to that, kind of get some feedback, look at it, look at the CDC, look at the place type overlay, and actually go into the ordinance and make minor tweaks and amendments as we need to. And staff is prepared to do that. But we need to do it with you, we need to do it with the applicant. We think this is a great opportunity for the county to get a predictable, quality development that everybody knows going into it, if you recommend approval, or if county adopts this, we all know what we're getting, including the offsites. And we do have people here to speak about transportation issues and offsite issues to answer any of those questions as well. So you can see in our comp plan, it is telling us to take these actions. I'm going to go back to the... back to the regulating plan. But I do, maybe go to the aerial and speak to a little bit of the connectivity or the aerial about the zoning. Yeah, perfect. So if you kind of look at that on this piece right there, you'll see to the north of it, you've got the school, and you've got Mail and Bluff, and River Oaks, and there's the little back piece. So this piece kind of adjoins that. And all of it, going back to what Rob was saying, he's a question, we kind of see that as all this one kind of village place-like type, and you've kind of got a school right in the middle. There is programmed commercial in front of Mail and Bluff currently. Yes, that is kind of being looked at right now. But overall, we look at, we don't look at land use in a vacuum. We look at parcels, and we look at land use and how it relates to other things around it, previous decisions. So from this and the, go back to the thoroughfare plan, you'll see that the road network that is shown here, you'll see a lot of entrance points. So a lot of those were done to line up with existing roads, one going out, there's one towards the back that kind of goes in the backside of River Oaks. That community then connects into Mail and Bluff. That community then connects into Pritchard Point Road and that county park. So from this side and Cherry Point Road, not only by car, we'd be looking at pedestrian infrastructure. You could hypothetically get from here all the way over to the animal shelter and never touch 170. So being that you can do those things, we see it as one cohesive development, and it's not chopped up. So I just kind of want to kind of speak to that. But we are looking at those acreages, and as a part of possibly looking at making some tweaks to it, staff is open to looking at some of the acreages and maybe getting those ranges a little tighter, making them have to make more sense. So just know that that's something that we're looking at. So thank you for bringing that up. So overall, these, I mean, the plans, I know if you're not used to the details and the types of stuff, can be a little bit overwhelming. So unless you have certain questions regarding the higher level stuff, I'd be more than happy to start taking any questions on the details of the plans, or the process, or where staff is in this process with these plans, where we would like to see it go. And of course, the applicant is here. I believe you have members of the public here. You just tell me when you want me to stop talking.
Okay, let's talk about traffic.
Traffic. Come on up.
Good. May I answer my own heart?
So we have our county traffic engineer here, and he can give you some great high-level stuff and some on-the-boots stuff that's occurring right now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So do you want to ask questions? Do you want me to give a high-level overview of kind of what's going on?
Give a high-level thing first, yes.
Yeah, so 170, I think everyone understands the 170, 278 area. This entire area has grown substantially over the course of the last 10 years, and really more substantially in the last couple of years. So we have been working through the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, in the region to look at what exactly we need to do, not only with 170, but with 278. And there was a study that was done in 2019 by ADCOM that recommended some near-term and some longer-term improvements along the 170 corridor. The good news is, those near-term improvements, which are kind of spot improvements, nothing directly at Cherry Point or along this frontage, but along the corridor itself, were just, they went to, to one of the committee meetings, the Public Facilities Committee meeting last week, and was approved to move forward to county council. Those improvements will go to county council then next week for approval for those near-term improvements, which include, basically, that stretch is from Oakdale Center South to 462. So while it doesn't directly impact this development, it does encompass that entire area. So these are near-term improvements, right around $8 million, to take care of some immediate traffic needs along the 170 corridor. As a part of the long-term plan, we are, while the plan is in place, there's a corridor plan in place that we are going to follow, that's a much more expensive project, somewhere in the $120 million range. So again, quite a big project. There's only, there's only certain ways that we're going to be able to move a project like that forward. It's with, potentially with grant funding. So we'll be attempting, looking at every potential grant funding opportunity that there is. But then in 2022, there was a proposed transportation sales tax that was progressing forward through the county. It was decided in, like, the July timeframe, that we're going to move forward with a green space sales tax. That will go, that's in effect right now, went into, went into effect in May of this year, and will collect through 2024. There is proposals on bringing a 2024 transportation sales tax to the ballot in November, in November of 2024. So we are currently working through that process through county council, as well as the different municipalities, on what exactly does that plan look like. In the 2022 proposed sales tax, the one that was, that has been postponed until potentially 2024, this project was that bigger project. On the 170 corridor was part of that overall plan. So again, there, there has been, there's been preliminary work looked at to address traffic concerns on this corridor, which directly impact Cherry Point as well as Riverwalk. So again, we're not, we're not sitting on our hands. We're, we're working through those plans. Again, that first plan was done in 2019. We're working through with some updates to that right now, to specifically address bike and ped accommodations along this entire corridor. So that's kind of the big overview of the region of 170, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions with the development.
Yeah, I have a question. I'd like to start a kind of a, maybe at a high level. The Kimbley Horn
Yeah.
TIA that you presented to us, and your documentation was dated March 22?
Yes.
And here we are in July of '23. And it identified commitments back then
Mm-hmm.
As well as some, some recommendations, made some strong recommendations
Correct.
Involving the offsite infrastructure
Yes.
Ingress, egress, curb cuts, you know, signalization, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So all a little bit confusing to me is to proceed with the development of the land without a infrastructure already in place to support it. And so what becomes important for me to understand is the timing of what's been called, you know, recommendations, near-term, far-term. What's going to happen, and how is that going to blend in to make sure that we don't, just try and put a stranglehold on the infrastructure that's already there in the interim?
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, that's the purpose of the traffic impact analysis, is to dictate what those onsite, what the, what the improvements look like offsite, to address the traffic specifically for this development. As far as the overall road network, the developer's not responsible for the overall road network. That is, that's going to be the responsibility of the state, Beaufort County, Jasper County, to address those needs. And again, that's what those bigger, that's what that bigger project looks like. Now, we are, we're close to about 37,000 vehicles or so that, per day on this particular corridor. We, we're not getting to the point of really necessitating the need for six lanes in each direction until we get closer to that $50,000, or 50,000 vehicle per day volume. So again, that's what we're looking at as more of that long-term, the long-term goal for this corridor.
Yeah, I would like to see, based on the TIA, the recommendations
Yeah.
That are made, what is the timing of those, and which is going to take place first, second, third?
Yeah.
And who's responsible? I mean, who's ultimately the party responsible for it? Is it the developer?
Yes. So the developer
Is it the county?
The developer would be responsible for anything that, that is directly correlated with their development. So if
That's onsite?
That, that is offsite as well.
Okay, that's the one I wanted to know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So there, on the site itself, there, there's proposed a access point at Riverwalk. There's an access point that's proposed in the center of the development with some right-turn lanes. I think, pulling that up right now. Some improvements on Cherry Point itself, the right turn lane going onto Cherry Point, as well as dual-left turn lanes and receiving lanes on Cherry Point. That would all be the responsibility of the developer to, to make those improvements offsite, per the TIA.
And I want to jump in to go back to the development agreement. That's also how a development agreement helps get those, the TIA identifies them. It kind of helps identify when they're needed by a traffic count. But a development agreement is the tool and the contract we have to hold the land developer responsible for implementing them. And if they don't implement them, then we have the right as a county jurisdiction to stop approving development. So that's where a development agreement tool kind of comes into play in addition to the science of the offsite improvements, when they go in, who's responsible, what triggers them, and we use a TIA to guide us in that decision.
And that blends the two plans together. So we have the bigger, long-range plan with the specific improvements that are required for the development, and that's how we marry the two together. And again, that's, as, as Mark had said, that's how we do that, is with a development agreement.
Okay, so I mentioned that the TIA that we saw was dated March 2022?
Yes.
Do you have one for July '23 for offsite? I saw some onsite traffic counts, but that's all.
Yeah, there was an updated memo that Kimbley Horn had provided in, in 2023 to address some of the, some of the changes in the way of development. We have some additional comments. The engineering department does, as far as what we would like to see, as far as that being updated, to address basically that 2019 corridor study that was done by ADCOM. So we've made those comments. So there, there is some minor tweaks that we would like to see to that updated, updated memo.
Yeah, so would we.
Yeah, definitely. What, it seems to me, I read in the paper that there was some, I don't know, land acquisition along 170 in this area by the county to have an extra, like, turning lanes, or what has the county done in this area? That's sort of part one. And part two is, could you be more specific about the coordination of Jasper County in this area?
Yes. So the, so the land acquisition was actually for that near-term project that we're talking about. So again, that goes to county council next Monday for approval. There, as a part of that, this overall corridor, what was being looked at is, basically, it's called an R-cut or a super street corridor. It's where you don't have necessarily full turning movements at every one of the intersections. You're typically allowing a left turn onto a side street, but not allowing the left turn off. So again, in that requirement, what you basically do is you, you force everyone to make a U-turn downstream to be able to go in the opposite direction. So the land acquisition was actually down by Oakdale Center South. So with these improvements, these near-term improvements, you will no longer be able to drive eastbound on Oakdale Center South and make a left turn. Again, too much volume, too much traffic, too many crashes in that area. So basically, it, we're, we're encouraging people to do what they're already doing. If you're sitting there for so long and you start to feel the pressure of people lining up behind you waiting to make a left turn, you, you as a driver start to feel that pressure and make decisions that you normally wouldn't make. So typically, what you would do is make a right turn, get out of the way, find the nearest, find the nearest intersection to make a U-turn, and come around the, the opposite direction. That's the safest movement you can make in that situation. So that's what we're doing at that, at Oakdale Center South. So that's going to be the first R-cut intersection that we, that we have along the 170 corridor. So that's what that land acquisition was for. To answer the second part of your question, in the coordination with Jasper County, we are, through the MPO, through LATS, we are coordinating with the development, both here on the Jasper County side, as well as with the city of Hardyville. So that is really the platform, is the LATS committee. However, Beaufort County has met individually with both Jasper County and the city of Hardyville on just the development that we see along the corridor. So they are just, let me back up real quick. On those near-term improvements that we're doing, that's actually a cost-share project. Jasper County is contributing, as well as the city of Hardyville, on those near-term improvements from Oakdale Center South to 462. So again, that's just how important it is to the region, and they understand as well that that's the critical backbone of the county.
And have you applied for or received any money from the April or May green space that Senator Davis, you know, got through the legislature?
Okay. That, that is not open for applications at this time. So I don't know on that, but for the green space, the green space is, the program is still under construction and has to be approved by county council and then approved by the state. We anticipate that to be ready to go by late fall.
Oh, that soon?
I hope so.
Because I'm a little worried that this is sort of the cart before, a lot of this is kind of the cart before the horse. But I mean, that's a real concern of mine. So I, you know, if you don't have the money yet, late fall, that's like four months from now, really? You're confident?
No, the green space, the green space program will be, we are anticipating it to be adopted and approved by county council. Then that would allow us to accept applications.
And this would be, I mean, I, I think what the gentleman just said is that this would be, this project would be available or be considered, likely to be considered as an applicant under that green space funding. Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, this, the green space doesn't have anything
This, yeah, they're completely separate.
This would be a future transportation tax that is not currently in place right now.
Mark?
John?
Just a couple of questions. I know there was some confusion because of the original traffic impact analysis, which I think indicated at that time there was 240,000 square feet of commercial space that was intended. My understanding now is that the plan is calling for up to 75,000 square feet of retail and 419 residential units, which includes a mix of multifamily and single families. Is that your understanding as well?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. You mentioned the near-term improvements are funded.
Yes.
So at least as far as the near-term improvements are concerned, what kind of a timetable are we looking at? Do you anticipate to have those?
Yeah, so, and I can run through those real quick, just so that everyone kind of gets, I don't want to belabor the, the point, but it does have an impact on the whole corridor. So, starting at 462, it's basically lengthening that left turn lane, that northbound left turn lane onto 462. So again, to get that traffic out of the travel way, I think people have seen that, where that backs up. So it's to lengthen that out. At Argent Boulevard, we're converting the left turn lane coming off of Argent on 170 to a dual left. So again, adding capacity, being able to add more green time to Argent is critical. One of the other, let, let me jump down. We already talked about Oakdale Center South, which is basically disallowing the left turn off of Oakdale Center South and having that U-turn movement through the, the right, the U-turn bulb. Then the primary impacts are really at the interchange. So what, what we're basically doing there is lengthening out that right turn that takes the, it's basically the right turn that uses the, the loop ramp to go to Hilton Head or into Bluffton. So that's lengthening that out and creating a barrier between that particular movement and the southbound movement of 170. The, what, what that does is a couple of things. It, it disallows people from the last minute to be able to cut over in front of folks that, that are in that lane. It's lengthening that lane out to get them out of the, the travel way. But what it also does is, the only time that that movement is not going to be functioning, is not going to be moving, is when there's a northbound left turn from northbound 170 onto 278. So whatever that time is, whatever that green time is, 10, 15, 20 seconds, is the only time that that movement to come on that loop ramp to go around to Hilton Head is not going to be moving. So with those improvements, and the other improvements are actually up on top of the bridge. So right now, when you get up on top of the bridge on 278, you have to merge into traffic on 278. We're actually repaving that and restriping that. So that is a, that lane just funnels onto 278 without that merge movement. So again, the idea is that queue that's there today that you see, you know, especially in the PMP, AMP and P will, will be remedied with these improvements. So that's, that's the primary improvement. Then at Oakdale Center North, that particular intersection is the one that's just right off of the, right off of the interchange. That is actually getting mediated off, and there's not going to be any movements allowed there except for the southbound left into the Parkers. So you are not going to be able to make northbound, or you're not going to be able to make left turn movements off of Oakdale Center North, or it's Barrow Landing Road on the other side of the road, you're not going to be able to make left turns. You're going to have to go farther downstream and come back around. So So that's the, that's in a nutshell. That's what the near-term improvements are. The idea is to keep traffic moving and making some of those critical intersections more safe so that we're not tying them up with crashes.
And with those improvements being funded, would you anticipate the timeline is for?
Yeah, the timeline, it was bid, we have an apparent little bidder, again, went to, went to Public Facilities Committee last Monday or the Monday before. It has a one-year timeframe. It shouldn't be a one-year project. It's, it's probably, we're, we're giving them some flexibility just to be able to get in and get that done because there's a lot of asphalt work to that project. And again, by the time we're getting them into construction, we're almost at winter time, so we don't want to tie them up and get them into a bad situation. Realistically, I think it's probably more like a six to eight month project.
Okay. The long-term improvements I know are open-ended at this point because you don't have funding in place.
Yes.
Level of service is typically an indicator of how well intersections function. I know the, the traffic impact analysis anticipated a build-out of this project by 2026.
Yep.
Do you have any, I, I didn't see any level of service indicators in the report that we saw. Are there any intersections that you anticipate failing because the long-term improvements aren't in place by the time build-out has been completed?
This, this particular intersection isn't the one that's going to take the overall corridor over the edge or any in particular intersection over the edge. You know, it's the culmination of all the projects along the corridor. You know, again, timing is critical. We're at that 37,000 vehicles per day mark. We, you know, it, it becomes over capacity at like 50,000 vehicles, somewhere in that range. So, I mean, we have some growth potential on these intersections. However, we are actively working through the MPO, through the state, to kick off the design on these ultimate long-term improvements. So again, we're not just sitting around saying, okay, we did the near-term improvements, now we can, now we can rest easy because we've got those done. We're moving straight into the design and figuring out what the funding looks like to be able to move the longer-term solution forward, understanding that we don't have a decade to put it in place. It's something that we need, we need done. From a state regi, from a state perspective, we feel like this is the most important project. Other than the 278 bridge that we're currently in the middle of, this is the most important project that we have for the community from a capacity and safety perspective.
Two more questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to dominate.
No, go ahead.
So in the traffic impact analysis, one of the long-term recommendations was signalization at Riverwalk.
Yeah.
But I also understood that, that distance doesn't meet South Carolina DOT warrants in terms of separation and that they were recommending that the road actually be shifted south. If that can't happen, what, what are the alternatives in terms of addressing those issues?
So that's the beauty of the R-cut corridor. So when we start to look at signalization, now you can move your signals closer together than what would typically be prescribed because rather than having the signals function, basically every movement around the intersection is a phase, and every phase takes a certain amount of time. So if you have left turns coming off of a movement as well as through movements, each one of those is a phase, so you can have up to eight phases, your through movements along with left turns at a particular intersection. When you start to look at something like an R-cut intersection, you're pulling all the phases out of that besides two. So basically, the only thing that gets green, green time on a, on a traffic signal is your through movement and your left turn to be able to make either a turn onto the street or a U-turn movement. So when you do that and you reduce, and this is getting to that real nerdy traffic engineering stuff now, when you go to, from eight phases down to the two, you're allowed much more green time. It doesn't create the delay that you typically see at a, at a traditional intersection. So when we look at this as being a super street corridor, that allows those, those signals to be closer spaced. Because I do agree with you, while it sounds good to be able to move that traffic signal down a couple hundred feet, it's pretty much developed in that area, and the more we see in the way of development, the harder that that gets.
Last question had to do with the long-term improvements, I think suggested that there would be additional right-of-way necessary. Is that something that Eva asked for the plans to reflect? Because I don't think it's showing additional right-of-way in front of the proposal right now.
So a couple of different things that, that we're doing there. Yes, we, we will, we will need to ask for some additional right-of-way for both 170 as well as on Cherry Point. So the good news is, we are actually working on a plan right now on what the ultimate improvements look like for Cherry Point. Because there are multiple developments that are occurring on that road along with the school, we feel like the best path forward is for the county to work on what that ultimate design looks like so that we get everything that we want and it's not piecemeal together. And then as development comes in, they pay or they make the improvement on the portions that are, that they're impacting on those particular roads. Long story short on that is, once we get that plan in place, then we'll be able to dictate directly to the developer how much right-of-way we need to be able to get those improvements within the, within the right-of-way, which includes roadway improvements as well as pedestrian movements. So 170 is part of the East Coast Greenway. So one of the things that we want to make sure of is that we're, we're prescribing or, or setting aside right-of-way, or at least being able to set aside a portion of the buffer yard for the, for the multi-use path to travel down 170 as well as make that pedestrian connection down Cherry Point. So again, not that, not that right now we see kids walking to that school, but we want to definitely be able to prepare for that with the, with the entire village concept for this region.
Thank you, and thank you commissioners for indulging me.
Yeah. Could you have some questions?
I did, I, I've got a couple, and this, these are very simple questions. One is for you. Reading in the traffic impact analysis, it just says it may result in a development that generates 50 trips during peak hour and will change the level of service of the affected street. What exactly is a trip?
A trip is just, it's a movement in a vehicle. So every time a, I mean, you're, you're basically adding up the number of vehicles that are entering and exiting a site. So a trip is basically, there's a trip to and a trip from. So the trip is basically getting in an automobile and driving to a specific development.
Okay, and this was taken into consideration when the development first came out and said that they want these three to 400 housing units put in those particular developments? And you're saying just because of all the interconnections and all the roadways that this would only generate 50 trips during the peak hour? Is that correct?
In the peak hour?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and just, this, this went to, to Mark. I don't know where he ran off to, maybe Rob, you can answer this.
There he is.
Oh, there you are, I'm sorry, you snip out? I was looking for you. Bad periphery. The other, the question I had, just, is just clarification for me, with the development agreement and traffic itself, did I understand correctly to say that at some point during the development, during the entire process, if we find that the traffic is not keeping up, or the, or the development is maybe exceeding the traffic based on what they're putting in there, that we can put a stop on development until the roadways are improved? Is that correct?
Partially. That would have to be, again, a development agreement is a contract.
Yes.
It's a contract between the county and the land developer.
Right.
And as long as the, is, if, if a developer is maintaining their side of the contract and putting in the improvements that we as the county believe were when they need to go in and when, because that's kind of, you can kind of negotiate that, they have to do those. And typically, development agreements are, they have to come in, you do annual reviews, they come in with phases. Nobody would come in and do this in all one thing. It'd be like a phase. Typically, phases are by units, and developers usually program these things by phases in certain units. Lots of times, it's kind of driven by water and sewer, road sections, stormwater, and then with that, the VA, the development agreement would recognize, okay, at the 80th unit, you needed this, at the 150th unit, you need this. So as long as they are doing those things with the phase and then those improvements are going in, then they are staying compliant with the development agreement. If at any point in time a developer does not do that, then the county has standing to stop approving future phases.
That answers my question. Thanks, Mark.
I have a question about access point number one, directly across from the River Park. That's a dangerous intersection right now when you try to speed across a couple of lanes and you don't have any place that you have to stop real quick, you're going to get clobbered. You're proposing signalizing, that, I mean, that you, the recommendation was to consider relocating it, but you're proposing to signalize that, that crossway there?
It would have to be, again, it would have to meet the, it would have to meet the traffic signal warrants through the DOT before that signal would be allowed there. But that would, that is a, a future location for a potential signal, yes.
Okay, just wanted to understand, that's what you're targeting?
We don't, so the, basically, the, the manual and uniform traffic control devices, there's nine different warrants to be able to meet traffic signal, to, to meet a traffic signal. This is a DOT roadway, so the way that the DOT treats these intersections is, it has to be at the point of meeting the warrant before they're allowed for the traffic signal to go in. So kind of as another example, right now, you see the congestion that's in and around the Old Field intersection. That one has just been looked at. We've just recently studied that. It's just barely making the threshold for signal warrants there. So again, that has been turned up, we did the study, turned that over to the state to move forward on a traffic signal installation at that particular intersection. So again, it's got to go through the process. We can't just say because of this development, because it's coming, that, that automatically gets a traffic signal. It's got to meet one of those nine warrants. And then I wanted to, to clarify real quick. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was going back to. On the, yeah, on the, on the 50 in the peak hour, basically, this is saying 652. So there's 652 trips total in the peak hour with the development.
All right, let me make sure I understand that. So on the traffic impact analysis, it said that 50 hour, or 50 trips during peak period will change the level of service of the affected street? So what, what is this, 652?
652 is the total in the PMP. That's the number of vehicles going into the development and coming out of the development in the peak hour. So if the peak hour is from, let's say, five to six, you have 350 coming in, 302 coming out. This is all based upon IT's Trip Generation Manual. So basically, what they do, it's the international manual that basically everyone uses. It looks at study areas across the country for similar type developments, and based upon that data, that's where they compile, compile what that, what similar type developments would look like.
Okay. And that, so those numbers you're getting, saying if this development is in place, that's what you can expect at 350 and 350 total?
Totally, yeah.
Okay. And in that, in that area now, based with, you know, Malin Bluff and the areas in the PUD at south of there, what type of traffic do we have going in and out of there now during peak hours? Do you have that information?
I mean, I just, I know the corridor is, is close to that 37 to 40,000. As far as the Malin Bluff intersection, I, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anybody else?
A point of clarification. So I was, I'm thinking back of what you said about the Argent Bluff traffic light there at 170. So you could turn left, there's a left turn signal on that traffic light, right? And that, and you flow into a two-lane, but if you, you know, so it's just a two-lane. But when you mentioned that, I heard like a groan from the audience at some point that there was like going to be six lanes altogether, three lanes. So I'm a little confused about that. And when you say you're lengthening the lane to get into, say, 462, so I'm just confused. When you say you're lengthening, or I forget the exact word you used, stretching out.
Yeah, lengthening, yeah, yeah.
Could we use the Argent Bluff turning left there? You know, you have, you have left turn, you're not merging, you actually have a left there. You roll into two lanes, and then a bit up, you know, it's north of this project, of course. And then if you want to go on to 462, you know, again, left-hand lane, left-hand turn. But as we all know, traffic really does back up on that
Right.
left turn lane. So that seems to me to be a pretty hazardous, I mean, we've talked about this before in the past, particularly with the two gentlemen who lived, you know, and knew this area extremely well. So that's a short-term improvement, but is that enough or is it sort of a Band-Aid? Can you give me a sense of what it's like in terms of planning?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's really just to get vehicles all out of the northbound movement so they don't spill back into the, the fast travel lane. So yeah, I mean, that is, that is more, that is definitely a short-term improvement. Ultimately, what we, what we see is the, a bigger improvement there would be a dual-left turn lane to go onto 462. But again, as of right now, 462, it's in Jasper County, and it's only a single lane in each direction. So again, we, we'd have to widen that, or we'd have to figure out a way to widen that far enough to the, to kind of the north and the, the west so that you can taper back down at some point until that would ultimately be widened out for a, a longer distance.
I mean, I, I've been on that road recently a lot. I mean, and people from Beaufort County, of course, go to Stan Airport that way and back from the Stan Airport.
For sure, yeah.
You know, it's, and, and many other, you know, I mean, people on that side of, of the river use it also. But that seems to me to be, I'm not satisfied with the way that is going to be handled in terms of safety.
Okay.
But that's just a concern I have.
Well, you've brought us a lot of detail on transportation. I'm not a transportation expert, so I'll tell you what I'd like, I would like to see for me, and I may be, folks in the audience feel the same way. I would like to see your maps of the, that corridor, particularly the corridor that's going to be impacted, that area is going to be impacted by Cherry Point.
Yes.
With a, when you're, what improvements you're making specifically in the, in the visuals?
Yeah.
When you anticipate them being made, and who's the responsible party for making sure that happens? You know, is it the developer? Is it Beaufort County? Is it a combination of Jasper County? Is it the SC DOT? I mean, who are all the partners in this? They got all going to come together and make this mesh? Because my concern is, is that the development gets underway, and by 2026, we got this thing really rolling and going, we don't have the infrastructure. You know, there's no guarantee we're going to get the transportation, penny and all that.
Yes.
So I'd like to know, you know, what your optimistic plan is for that, that the timeframe that we've been talking about here and how that blends with the proposed development of the lands.
Right, right. Yeah, and some of that, I mean, we're still working through the plans. We don't, we're not even to preliminary plans right now for the Cherry Point piece. Hope to be there fairly quick. I can give an overview of what that looks like and, and prepare a map to better disseminate. There, there's so many details yet to be worked out, again, on who's paying for what. Because again, at this point for that bigger project, we don't have a funding mechanism as far as the improvements on Cherry Point. Where, where we would be at on that one would be, there, there's a similar process that was done in Jedburg to the north, up in, up in Berkeley County, that they used an interesting tool up there. And basically, what they did is they had a bunch of development that was going on all at one time. They were trying to figure out which developer was going to be responsible for what part to bring this whole project together. Because you don't want to leave, you don't want to put that all on the first developer that's coming, or you don't want to leave the last guy who's at the, at the end of the road, left holding the bag on all the public improvements. So basically, what they came up with was going back to the number of trips that each development generated. They paid into a fund that basically helped for the public improvement piece. So again, the county has a certain responsibility because the school's already there, right? So the school's generating traffic. This development's going to generate traffic. There's open land on the other side of Cherry Point that could potentially be generating traffic. So trying to figure out what's that fair balance between what the county's going to provide, what developer A is going to provide, what developer B is going to provide, really is a pretty good roadmap from what we've seen with Jedburg. And so that's, that's really the idea or our proposal with us coming up with what that ultimate plan for Cherry Point looks like, and then being able to divvy that out based upon the intensity of the development, understanding that the county has some responsibility there as well with the school already there. Yeah.
And one of the things too about a place type overlay that staff likes is it provides that level of predictability. We know, we know how many residential We know how many residential units it can create, so we have that number for the input for the engineers and the traffic to understand that. And if we scope out a specific number of commercial, retail, or office, and then that's in there, we have upfront numbers of science that we can help start building into that equation. And that's a beneficial tool, a place type overlay versus a straight resanding, you're not really quite sure what's going to be built on that property.
And so to go back to your question, as far as the development happening in 2026 and making sure these improvements are done, so that's the point of having this plan done, which again, should be done later this year, as to who's responsible for what. What that would allow us to do is developer A is coming in, they have certain improvements that we're going to test them with because they're generating that traffic. The county has certain portions of that because we're trying to address some of the school traffic, working with Beaufort County Schools. Then the other developer that may come in later, we will probably just go ahead and make those improvements, knowing that we'll, at some point in the future, based upon the trips, that will be like a backwards impact fee that they would pay into these improvements that are already done. That way, it's fair for everyone that's involved along the corridor. So again, part of that has to be worked out.
And I know, and I know for a lot of people in South Carolina, getting infrastructure first is mind-blowing, but that's what we're trying to achieve.
Well, the off-site infrastructure first.
Yes, off-site.
Yeah, you'll get the other done first.
Yes, so that people aren't left with a traffic mess without any improvements.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, thank you. I think we want to hear from the, we'll give an opportunity for the applicant, the developer. Somebody would like to speak on their behalf? Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Brian Whitmer with Whitmer Jones-Kiefer, we're the land planner on the project. And Mark and Rob did a great job. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I was hoping maybe you could tell us a little bit something about the infrastructure issues, as you understand them, and the coordination that's necessary, et cetera.
Well, I think we're more the land planners as far as the infrastructure that's coming in. I think that's more of a civil item that would get answered. Do we, the civil? Yeah, come on.
I do have a question. I do have a development question.
Okay.
Hey there, so Conrad Salvagen with Kim Lee Horn. We did the TIA for the site. As far as the off-site improvements that we've been discussing, Eric identified a few of them, but what we have identified are some big key intersections of like Palestine Drive slash Cherry Point at SC 170. We would be adding an additional southbound left turn lane to increase like the queue capacity and increase the number of left turns that can enter Cherry Point to accommodate our traffic as well as school traffic.
Well, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think all of those were described in your 2022 TIA?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has it been, we have not seen an update on the off-site infrastructure recommendations since the 2022 plan was put out. Do you have recommendations that have changed since, understanding that square footage is changing for commercial, et cetera?
Yes, so we did, we conducted a memo that we sent to Eric here recently about the difference in our trip generation between the two different land uses, or, excuse me, between the two different site concepts. We have the one done in 2022, and we have the updated 2023. Is what you're asking about, correct?
Not the trip generation, those are onsite. That was the onsite coming off. I'm interested in the surrounding infrastructure when you step into 170. My question is, you have made a series of recommendations about that, and you made some alternative recommendations on the Riverwalk signalization issue. Have you updated anything of those off-site infrastructure recommendations since 2022, March of?
No, sir.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. Are there any other questions that you want to?
The development itself and the way it's planned out right now, if you're looking on this, what's in front of us now, to my left, your right, there's a lot of commercial frontage right there that's on Open T Highway 170. I know that in the zoning, and I know Mark talked about this as well, that we have flexibility with this overlay, but I know that as that is planning to get rezoned into the T4, I'm not going to find it now. Yeah, T4 NC, but it does allow for things that could even be a hotel. Is that correct? Is it on, or did I read that incorrectly?
No, it's the dark purple, it's T4 NC.
Yeah, so in regards to uses.
Please, please.
So uses, if the zoning, even if it goes back, it was just a straight zoning, those uses are allowed. So what you try to achieve, and I'm not going to try to, yes, if the zoning code shows it as an allowed use, then that use can be located on the property. But if a TIA, this is how I would, this is my professional, if a TIA didn't address that use as a part of the programming in the offsites, I would say they would have a difficult time doing it unless they came back and updated all of that stuff and identified that traffic. So when you combine the regulating plan with the street grid network system, that kind of starts dictating how big buildings can be and where parking goes, you start to help define some of those future actual implementations. And then when you layer that with a traffic study that has certain uses identified, that then gets locked in a DA, it starts helping kind of build that. But I do want to make it, I don't want to say that it's a magic crypt, like that just solves all problems. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying, it starts to help take some of the anticipation of certain uses that might be allowed in the code, it starts pushing them to the side because it would be very difficult to get them built on the property. I don't know if that answers the question, but I was just trying to, I mean, I think that, but yes, if the zoning says it's allowed, it would be allowed on the site, but they would have to fit that building and that use and all the required parking within one of those blocks that you see within a road network.
Right.
And if it's allowed, they can do it and meet all the requirements and all the site development requirements.
But that would take away from other commercial or development you could do in that area?
Okay, I'm sorry, say that again, please.
That would take away from other development that you could do in that area or other commercial. So yeah, there's maxes on what you can do, but there's some flexibility as to what that is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you, thank you very much. I think there's an opportunity for a public comment. I've got some, I think 10 or so here in front of me. Do we have any more? Okay. Just a reminder before we start this, when you come up, please introduce yourself, where you're located. You have three minutes. I would ask you to be respectful of the audience. If you have, if you hear something being said that you also would like to say, please try to avoid any redundancy. We hear you the first time. And so you have that opportunity to speak, and if you have something you want to offer, then by all means, do it. So one other factor, we are a recommending body to the county council. It still goes through a process from us, after we make our recommendation through the Land Use Committee, and then on to county council for up to three readings and public meeting for a final decision. That takes several months, I believe. So with that in mind, I have the first speaker who would, what is his name on the list here, Terry Lassiter?
Good evening, I'm Terry Lassiter. I'm a 32-year resident at 146 Cherry Point Road. I don't know how long y'all have been around or on the council. I was at the comprehensive plan meetings, and as I remember it, it is one house per two and a half acres, which is on rule, and that entire corridor was to be ruled. And we've done Old Field, we've done things to do different things. But we spent a ton of money there, and we're not listening. And these are people that we supposedly respected because we paid them to do these things for us. So the comprehensive plan is now, to me, a myth, but let me move on. You do understand that this is 70-some-odd acres, 400 homes, okay? What your traffic thing is not showing also is that there's 300 going in across the street, which is River Oaks, which is not true either because there's 300, that's 400, that's 300, 300 more behind Maitland. Maitland and Rivers Oaks will dump on to Cherry Point Road. And if you haven't been out there, please drive out there and see our brand-new road. And as you leave the dirt, you can touch the fire hydrant if you're on the road. That's how close the fire hydrant is. This is the wonderful work that's been done out there. And as you turn around and go to leave, you can ride in the potholes in the right-hand lane as you exit, okay? We cannot get in and out of our, if you, I would love for y'all to come see me at 2:45 in the afternoon during school, because you won't get there till 3:00, 3:15. You know, we have been back there minding our own business, they built a school. And by the way, all this is not new. You do realize that, correct? All this was presented in 2004, every bit of it, with the exception of where the animal shelter is. Everything that they're showing you was shown in 2004. Don't believe me, please look at the records. The other thing that's very interesting in all of this is that these original developments were passed because of the development, $1,000 per unit. What are we getting now? Less than 1,000, or thousands, is what I've understood. So we have gone, another thing, too, the traffic study from 2008, 2007 showed we needed six lanes already on 170. And we're running off of a 2019, this is 2023 people. How many things have progressed since then? How many developments have gone through? How many more cars?
Thank you. Kayla Rhimes?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kayla Romines. I'm the Director of Stewardship at the Open Land Trust here in Beaufort. And on behalf of the Land Trust, I'm here to express our concerns regarding the rezoning proposal for 1691 Oakaty Highway. Our conservation easement grantor, Margaret, she shares the same apprehensions that we have for the Oakaty River's well-being, and she shared her comments with you virtually. And it should also be noted that her property was protected through the Beaufort County Rural and Critical Land Preservation Program back in 2010, sits directly across Oakaty Creek from this proposed development. And while we appreciate the goal of creating walkable nodes along Highway 170, we urge you to carefully consider the distribution of zoning classifications in this development. The near equal allocation of T4 Neighborhood Center and T3 Neighborhood Zoning represents a significant change from the existing T2 Rural Designation. Such a substantial shift in zoning requires careful consideration. We respectfully request that you assess the cumulative impacts on the Highway 170 corridor, the Oakaty River, and nearby protected properties, which are shown on a map that I included with my written comments. Our proposed improvements include increased buffers to protect the river and wetlands, expanded community open spaces, and an evaluation of how the development interacts with neighboring projects. The current site plan lacks essential detail to address these concerns adequately, and we implore you to incorporate these recommendations into the final plan, aligning the development with community objectives and preserving the environment to the best of your ability. Please consider these concerns expressed by our easement grantor, Margaret, who cannot be here tonight, but her insights are invaluable, and they deserve a thorough examination. Thank you for your attention. I trust you'll carefully consider these in protecting the Oakaty River and Oakaty Creek as best as we can. So if you require any more questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be happy to talk to you. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Kay Yeomans?
Kay Yeomans, I live at 177 Cherry Point Road, been there for 38 years. Don't try to go home when school's let out. Hope you don't have a fire at your house or need an ambulance, because you can't get there. They get all the way out onto 170. And if you're coming in from the north side, they don't yield and let you go in. You wind up stuck in the intersection. There's a lot of wetlands that are going into the creek now. We don't see the crabs and shrimp like we previously did. We have a lot of wildlife. In this zoning amendment picture, they only want to put a 20-foot buffer for this old existing neighborhood, and I think we need a lot more than that. And other than that, I agree with what everybody else is getting.
Thank you. I think it's Felice Lamarcia?
Thank you. Felice Lamarcia, and my husband and I live on Hilton Head, and we're hoping to escape the overdevelopment and the traffic. And we bought this precious piece of property at Cherry Point, and I call it unspoiled. And we're about to spoil it if we continue with what has been proved. Riverwalk or Oaks, or I don't know the name of that one, Mallinbluff, they're all going to connect to us on Cherry Point. So while it's great that we've connected the neighborhoods to go behind and off 170, you're hurting the neighborhoods. And traffic study, did it, the 652, did it include River Oaks and Mallinbluff coming up to Cherry Point? That would be an important question. I think 700 homes before the 400 we're about to add is excessive, absolutely excessive for this pristine area on the Oakaty River. Which brings me to the next point, which is what kind of environmental studies have been done? All of the communities up 170, especially the ones that impact the Oakaty River, what's been done to make sure we preserve that treasure that we have? That's an important question I would like answered before any more development is done in Cherry Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Scotty Daniel?
Good evening. I currently live in Bluffton. We purchased a piece of property, 165 Cherry Point Lane, and we're in the process of building a house. First off, as Commissioner Ross pointed out, they're trying to put something on 71 acres that doesn't belong on 71 acres. All of a sudden, we're going to take into totality all the other subdivisions and consider that to be part of this to make it fit. Like they said, nothing happens in a vacuum. All these subdivisions, all these houses are overcrowding our schools, and the Planning Commission is recommending, based on a future referendum, to pay for all this, future taxes to pay for all this. If I went out and bought a car based on a future pay raise, I would be an idiot. If I came to you tonight and said I want to build a 30-foot statue in my front yard, and I know it's illegal, it's not allowed, but you're going to vote on that in two years, will you let me build it? That's what they're asking us to do. They're wanting us to approve something now off of something in the future, and I don't agree with that. Also, I'd like to point out that it's a minor thing, but when they were up here talking, they talked about the partnership between the applicant and the commissioner, I'm sorry, they talked about the Planning Commission and the commissioners working on these things together, never mentioning the citizens. I think we're losing touch with who they serve, which is us. And it's very telling when they just gloss over us. it's very telling when they just gloss over us. I agree with the fact that that 20-foot buffer needs to be much larger. I would suggest a berm with some kind of plants. We're building a house that could be ended up looking into the back of an apartment complex. We don't know what's going to go in there. It's just a little square block on their plan at this point. But this is our neighborhood and our life. And I don't see the need to turn that spigot wide open and have 400 houses brought in. Have you tried to get a doctor's appointment lately? Have you tried to go see a dentist? You're looking at six to nine months out. And we just keep opening up that spigot. You control the size of the tidal wave that comes towards us through this. You can regulate that. I don't want to live in Garden City, Georgia. I want to live in Beaufort, South Carolina.
Thank you. It looks like Peric Stetter?
Thank you. Derek Stetter. My wife and I own the property at 169 Cherry Point Road. I'll make it quick because a lot of the other comments were already said. Number one would be safety. Obviously, we spoke about the traffic issues for nine months out of the year. You cannot get on Cherry Point Road two times during the day. No police or fire can access at that time either. There's also backup onto 170. I know the short-term traffic analysis talked about increasing the length of the lane at 462 because of the safety issue. Well, there's a safety issue at Cherry Point already. And that's not on them or the county. It's just something we need to address before we move forward. School capacity is another concern. In those papers that I think everyone received, the COO said, "At this time, the Beaufort County School District does not have ability or funding to support any new residential development that could increase the number of school-aged children in the area." If we move to approve, if you all move to approve this, you would be doing a disservice to the current students and the future students. I feel like, and someone had already said it, we're putting the cart well before the horse. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed prior to this being done. The density is also a very big concern of mine. River Oaks community is 63 acres, and that's 330 units. This is 70 acres, and that's, of that 70 roughly, not all of it would be residential. There'd be commercial upfront, but they're talking 419 units. That's a lot of impervious area. So where does all that water go? I know on the plan, it says bioswales, rain gardens, and some other sources, but there's a wetland area in there that would be negatively affected as well because all that natural rainfall that now goes into the wetland would not be going in there. So with that, that decrease in water in the wetlands would increase the drought and flood damage, increase the nutrient runoff and water pollution, increase shoreline erosion, and trigger a decline in wildlife populations. So those are just some things. Obviously, more people have stuff to say, but I'll leave you with this. A significant portion of Beaufort County is covered by rural zoning, natural preserve zoning, and community preservation areas, which helps to protect and preserve the cherished rural qualities of that's from the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Kathleen Keding?
I'm Kathy Keding. I've lived on Cherry Point Roads, I think about 21, 22 years now. Pretty much everybody's addressed everything I wanted to say. However, I said this in 2019. I'm going to say it again. A population landfill is a population landfill, and this is what we're looking at. I invite you, please, I invite you to please, come and see what they're doing behind the elementary school before you prove anything. Okay? And do remember, they're one of these households, that's not one car, that's two cars. So I'm not quite sure how that traffic study works. Come, come and visit us when the school opens. Come and stand across the street and watch it, because it's scary as hell, you know? Come, come and look at the deer that are dying around there. Come to our road! Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Kamner?
Hello, I'm Casey. I guess I'm 161 on Cherry Point. My husband and I actually just bought, or in the process of closing, in the next two weeks. And I guess, for me, I'm from Washington DC, so I'm from a very big populated city area. And we moved here to escape the mass amounts of people. This is our paradise. We went on our honeymoon and said, "This is it. This area of Beaufort County is it." I know that they were saying that they want it to look like Haversham. Haversham's gorgeous. But if you've seen the homes that they're planning on putting on River Oaks, they're cheap and they do not look like Haversham does. When I look at the lot that we're going to be building, I want my children to be able to run outside and have their feet in the grass and see the wildlife that's around there. And if you look at the studies on oyster beds, I don't know if you guys have done it, but from the very tip of where we are on Cherry Point, it's closed all the way to Bailey's Landing. There's no more oyster beds there. That's an issue, and this is going to make it even worse. When I think about money, that's what the main point is here, is these companies are moving here, they want money. They're building these homes that are cheaply made to make more money. And for us, I don't know if, right now, my house is covered, but you see where the little cabin is, that's where my house is going to be. And this 20-foot berm is not enough. If there's a two-floor house, I'm going to have people looking into my backyard. Do I know if there is a sexual predator watching my children run naked in the backyard? I need to protect that. And I don't think that that's something anyone else is thinking of, is the children. It's about money, not the children. It's not about the oyster beds. It's not about preserving what we have. People are moving here in droves to get a piece of what we have, and we need to protect it. And it's your opportunity to protect it. I don't want you to think of it as it's a responsibility. It's an opportunity to protect it. Every single one of you has that opportunity for your children, your grandchildren, and for my children. Thank you.
That's the end of the public comments. Okay, anybody would like to ask a question of the staff or transportation or? That's all I had. Did you have another one? All right, well, if it's a minute one, then sure, come on up.
I'd like to just add a quick remark from the applicant.
Surely. Just introduce yourself, location, your role.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, and members of the commission. My name is Kevin Dukes. I'm an attorney with Harvey &amp; Vady Law Firm, and I represent the applicant. I've been brought on just recently, actually, specifically to work as things move forward on developing the development agreement. I think that when we started, Mr. Davis was talking about the place-type overlay, that this is the first time that this has been done. And so I think that it's important that we understand exactly kind of where we are here and then moving forward. There's a lot more to be done as opposed to a standard rezoning. This is very much like, I think, as he mentioned, PUDs in the past. That was done away with, then there was a need for it. And so this new place-type overlay has kind of come to fill the void. It allows for the county and the staff to create communities like Haversham, to create things that I think that most of us want. And in order to do that, you work through the development agreement to come up with solutions to lots of things. The overlay of the T4 and the T3 is true, but it doesn't have to overlay T4 and T3 carte blanche. There can be things accepted out. There can be things that are dealt with through that process of the development agreement. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, that position. The other thing I think which is important is, we've heard a lot tonight, I think specifically on the traffic, there needs to be some more details, I think, given to the commission. And we can certainly work with staff and to get some more details, more specifics, and maybe some more graphics to show exactly where those items are dealt with. To, in a way, work together to improve, you know, Cherry Point Road, to improve some of the connectivity and to improve overall 170 as this project goes forward. And so I would say that in an effort to maybe present some better information, because this is the first time this has been done for a place-type overlay, and to maybe go through some more of that process, look how we're going to work together with staff, and to provide y'all with some, maybe some more specifics, happy to take notes on any other things you might want. I would ask that we continue this to the next meeting. I believe that there's a, Section 3 of Y'all's rules provides for a continuance, one continuance of right by the applicant. So we'd ask, you know, did that be allowed? And happy to field any questions, any specifics that y'all want. So that when we come back, maybe, you know, we're actually addressing y'all's concerns. I've heard some of the concerns of the public, so address those. Because I do think this tool, the place-type overlay tool, is the way we get to conscientious development in Beaufort County. The Community Development Code specified a village-type overlay in this area. That was foreseen by the planners under the code. And this is the mechanism, this is the tool to get what the community wants, what the county council wants, what this body wants. It is a great tool, I believe. And so I don't, I would hate to rush through that on the first time through. So if we could, I'd ask for maybe your input and see what we can do to maybe utilize that tool a little better next times. That was my main request of the chairman.
Well, thank you. Did anybody want to ask him questions, or is representing the applicant? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Are you with the, I know you're sir?
Hey, I'm Grant McClure. I represent the Coastal Conservation League. Yep. I'm just giving general public comments on behalf of the league, so thank you. I had signed up, but I understand I may have been lost in the shuffle, so thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Grant.
So on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed Cherry Point rezoning that takes 70 acres at 1691 Oakaty Highway and removes it from T2R and effectively applies the place-type overlay. So a coordinated SC-170 corridor area plan with a shared community vision and standards to foster regional cooperation along this heavily-used, fast-growing, multi-jurisdictional corridor is needed to guide responsible growth in this area. Decisions on specific rezoning requests, such as the Cherry Point rezoning, should be informed by a jointly planned policy and standards about surrounding 170. The Coastal Conservation League strongly encourages the Planning Commission to postpone this decision on rezoning and future rezonings along the 170 corridor until such a plan is complete. We also share concerns about transportation and environmental protection. And I want to talk a little bit about this study because it is referenced specifically in the Comprehensive Plan. The Vision of Beaufort County 2040 Comprehensive Plan focuses on the SC-170 corridor, noting that signage, sprawling development, traffic management, the loss, and the loss of rural lands is of concern to the residents that use this road for their primary access. The Comprehensive Plan recommends channeling new growth into municipalities and existing developments. We've heard tonight, there are several existing PUDs in the area, and I would imagine they are not yet built out. And limiting greenfield development to protect these sensitive lands. More specifically, the Comprehensive Plan has an action item, and that's Action BE1.3, "The Development of an SC-170 Area Plan in Conjunction with the City of Hardyville and Jasper County that defines a growth framework for the corridor and addresses the issues of joint concern, such as transportation and environmental protection." And to my knowledge, such a study has not been acted upon, and I think it would really inform your decision on this specific I want to support the Open Land Trust in their easement. And I understand that this creek may have actually been impaired by the Abel Contracting Fire, which was in 2018. A CND landfill actually caught on fire. And so you've got an already impaired resource, and just adding more impervious surface is going to sort of further endanger that watershed. I just mentioned that, you know, this area is seeing something like 37,000 trips per day. And I think maintaining those lower densities in the rural areas is really a strategy to try to mitigate some of that traffic, rather than a fancy, you know, fancy engineering solutions, just maintaining that rural zoning can help mitigate traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So did you want to make comments? There any questions or comments?
I have a technical question, maybe Mark or Rob can answer. When Mr. Dukes asked for continuance, Ed, what does that mean exactly? In terms of process?
Sure. I think what, and I don't want to speak for Kevin, but what he's saying as representing the applicant is, is they listen to the crowd, they listen to everything here, and they're perfectly okay with you all
deferring?
deferring or tabling this item and continuing this conversation next month with the applicant bringing additional information and continuing to work with staff to further refine this regulating plan.
My question is the timeline, and does that start a clock? Does that mean we have to make a decision within, rather than, whatever happens here tonight, if it's a continuance, does that mean that that starts a 60-day period?
You would get one, so you can have one.
Which means 30 days?
Yeah, so you would have one that you all could, somebody could make, you could recommend to defer the item until the next month's meeting, and you all can do that one time. After that, you would have to either A, make a recommendation of whatever that recommendation might be.
In a motion, yep.
Yep. Or the applicant could, on their behalf, request to, "We want to have more time and come back with you." But that would be on them. You all can do it once. You can't like, and that's, the Planning Commission can't, it's a continuous table, table, table.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
But you all can do it one time.
I was wondering, Ed, if the applicant is aware of that, and does the applicant want to withdraw this now to, is that fair to ask the applicant?
I think his attorney, Rip.
That's what I mean, the attorney, or the applicant.
Well, I think he was asking for a deferral.
He was
A continuance.
For a continuance.
For a continuance, is what he was asking.
As opposed to withdrawing the application.
Right.
Which would be, start the clock all over again.
Right. So I just want to be clear about that. So the applicant's attorney was asking for a continuance, is that correct?
Yes, we understand that this body has to make a recommendation to the council within 45 days. So we would ask for that to progress within 45 days to next year. The space is correct. And at that point, if there needs to be more time, we can talk through that. His point is, it would be upon our request, so we're going to rock y'all into that 45 days. But we're aware of that timeline, that the next year, we would have to make a request to withdraw for more time, or we'd all have to make a decision.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure everyone's interested in that.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Other, other questions?
Mark, I just had a quick question based on Mr. McClure's comment, specific to that action item that was referenced in the comp plan. What is the status on that? Has there been any conversation about a 170 area plan?
Are you talking about a transportation corridor plan, 170?
Well, I'm not as familiar with what that action item says, so that's why I was hoping you could provide some clarification on that.
So, yeah, that recommendation applies really to the area of Oldfield going out to the intersection with Calawassee and the Broad River, that part of 170, and coordinating a plan with Hardyville. And a plan with Hardyville and Jasper County. That work is being initiated now, I would say at a very conceptual level. It's so loco, they're putting together a committee to look at joint planning and growth boundaries in that corridor that each of the municipalities could agree on.
Just making yourself available, huh? All right, is there any more conversation that we need to have or discussion?
Yeah. After hearing everything that I heard, it's clear that there's been a lot of work done on this. People have been working on it for weeks, perhaps months. We saw this a week ago, more or less. So I need more time. I'm thinking the rest of us need more time, so I'm in favor of the continuance. But I would like to see your comments about the traffic timeline, who's responsible, those questions get answered. I also, there's, I don't think there's anybody here from the school district who's talked about the school situation. If they're pretty much at capacity, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, I don't think even addresses that or does it.
It's tough to talk about schools.
It does.
I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. But anyway, I think we need to have some more clarification on that as well. So that's my two cents.
Okay.
I'll throw in my two cents on that too.
All right.
That's $11 for inflation, I guess.
Okay, got it.
I think I have some issues, and I don't know if a continuance is going to solve this, because I think there's a lot of moving parts to this. And I do appreciate what staff has done as far as looking at this tool to be used going forward as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. Unfortunately, I think it's one of those NIMBY things, right? Not in my backyard. There's a lot of benefits to it. I think going forward, it's going to work great in particular areas. And I understand, you know, the comprehensive plan is a living, breathing document, and it is up for review and it is up for change at a lot of intersections, and particularly we come to, I don't want to say an impasse, but in a position like this where there are so many moving parts, some things, I don't think, in my opinion, and it doesn't count for much, are going to be addressed in 30 to 45 days, 30 to 45 days. One is, as the gentleman spoke out there, the ecological impact that this would have on that community, on the Okati River, the Okati branch. I spoke with the stormwater folks the day before yesterday or late last week about issues they have with Mallinbluff or River Oaks to see what type of impact that is having in the Okati River as far as, you know, all the fecal forms and everything else that is now being dumped into those areas because of the reduction in the oyster beds. The other thing, and Ed and I were speaking kind of behind the microphones a little bit, is with the proposed school referendum. That's, it's a wish and a dream. Nobody knows if that's going to get approved or not. I think one of the most important facts that we have, and one of the most important factors we have right now is educating our kids, and if they're already on a strained infrastructure as it is as far as the school system, and just to say, well, I hope that bill gets passed, that we can grow that school, to have them live, you know, working out of portable units and everything until the budget gets approved and the school gets built. Like I said, I think it's a great tool. I hope that we can use this tool. I'm not 100% sure that an extension is going to clear this up in 30 to 45 days.
Well, you're probably absolutely right. And that's okay, because in 30, 40 days, we'll know more than we do at this moment.
That's true.
And what will happen is, at that point, we can then say, okay, we can recommend to county council to postpone this thing, and then go back to the drawing board and do more messaging and, you know, and then maybe this tool works at a later time. But it's okay for the process to work the way it's working.
All right.
I think.
Yes, Dan?
I've done a little math, and it appears that we have a density proposal in this project of about six units per, or six lots, or six per acre, which would develop a 7,200 square foot lot, which is roughly a 60 by 120-foot lot. These are very small lots in an area that is already impacted density-wise to its max. So I, as a previous developer, I would say, in fact, I'll confess that I always went into my first zoning meeting with a plan that I knew was going to be rejected, and then I had the one ready that I thought would be the reasonable one to begin with. And I think a 7,200 square foot lot, six per acre, given what has already happened around this property, is simply too much density. I'm also troubled, and I heard from folks about the buffering. I'm reminded of a development down the street from me where the developer promised to buffer, and on a weekend, he went in and mowed it all down, all the trees and all the buffering. 20-foot is simply not enough buffering to protect these people. That should, I don't know what the regulations say, but there should be mounding and plantings on top of a mound, and you can't do that in 20 feet. I'm a developer, I can tell you. It goes up and it goes down. You'll never keep any growth on it because it's just too steep. The slope has to go up and down, and so the buffering needs to be reviewed. And I'm very troubled by the entire presumption that there's going to be a school bond issue that will be approved, and we all know school bond issues are just automatically approved. Wait a minute, no they're not. And so we're betting on the come there. I don't know how many children are going to live in these 400 units, but I'm going to suggest that that will exceed the capacity, and they're betting on the come that the school bond will be approved. Based on those issues, I think the plan needs to be revised. I think the density is way too high. I'm sorry that it's come to this, but when you look at everything that's happened around this property, it's just too much.
Thank you. Are there comments? Yes.
I was just going to say that by deferring the 30 days, clearly the applicant has heard all of the issues that we've heard tonight that gives him the opportunity to provide us with more of that information, and we'll know in 30 days whether it satisfactorily answers our questions or not, as you were saying. But I also like the fact that this, even though it's another trip for folks to come back here, at least it's another opportunity for not just us to hear the responses and what's being proposed and the changes, but it also gives residents an opportunity to hear what's new and provide more information rather than that happening behind closed doors. So I think the deferral makes sense in terms of being able to get more of this information out front and see what we can do with this tool that we haven't had a chance to apply up until now.
Other comments?
I'm in support of a deferral. I think the more information we know, the more we can share with the public, the public can participate in the process, which to this point doesn't appear they've been a part of, the better potential solutions. And maybe not, we'll get to a point where there's an impasse that can't be agreed to. My particular ache is the off-site infrastructure. The 170 corridor and that area is becoming extremely congested. There are new developments, there are properties for sale all up and down that corridor, and you can be sure that everybody's going to jump on it. This is going to open up for more potential retail or strip mall. I just don't feel comfortable in the answers to the questions of what's going to happen, when, and what, who's going to be responsible for it when there's multiple people and organizations and counties and municipalities involved. I just feel very, very unstable in proving anything that would let this move forward without further looksee and digging deeper for some detail. If there's no further comments, I would ask for a motion on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer any action on this for 30 days and allow the developer to address some of the issues that have been raised. Second?
Comments?
I'm going to vote against that motion because I think that 30 days or 45 days is simply not enough time to address, I've counted eight issues that we have all brought up and that members of the audience have brought up.
Well, that's all the time we have.
Well, not if we voted against it tonight, but I don't think I have that in support.
Well.
That's okay, because that's my two cents.
Other comments? All in favor of the motion for a deferral until the next Planning Commission meeting in August? Adrianne, all those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? And that's five. Got to get your vote.
Did I vote?
No.
Oh.
Go ahead. I didn't see your vote.
He voted in favor of the motion.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Four, four, two against. So the motion passes for deferral and continuance until the August meeting. All right. All right, we're not adjourned, people. We're not adjourned. Commissioners? Commissioners?
Something, yes.
We're not adjourned yet, please.
Yeah, maybe they'll have more information by then.
I don't really have anything more to talk about. I want them to get down to the table. I don't have anything for chairman's report. Are there's any other business you would like to discuss tonight?
I'm sorry, did you?
Any other business you would like to discuss tonight?
Oh, no, not on my behalf.
How about your end?
Sorry?
Any further business you would like to discuss tonight? All right, with that, without objection, the meeting's adjourned.